Yeah, I'm waiting.
Oh, good morning and greetings to everyone and welcome to our Queens Borough President Hybrid Land Use Public Hearing. This hearing is taking place both in the Borough President's Conference Room at 120-55 Queens Boulevard in Kew Gardens and on our website at www dot queensvp dot NYC dot gov. I am Queens Borough President Donovan Richards and I will be chairing this land use public hearing. For those who wish to testify virtually and haven't already pre-registered to do so, please visit www dot queensvp dot org forward slash land use. If you are attending our public hearing in person, please see our staff to sign up for public speaking time if you have not already done so. Please note your opportunity to speak will follow those who are pre-registered. Written testimony is welcome from those who are unable to testify. All written testimony must be received by 5:00 PM today and may be submitted by email to planning@queensvp.org or by conventional mail sent to the office of the Queens Borough President at 120-55 Queens Boulevard Room 226, Kew Gardens, New York, 11424. Lisa, I'll go to Lisa now to please review how this public hearing will proceed.
The public hearing shall be conducted in the following manner. The applicant will be called to give an description of the zoning action requested, an explanation of the proposed project, and respond to any questions from the chair. The floor will then be open for public speakers. Please listen for your name to be called. Each speaker will have three minutes. A signal will be heard and a notice will be displayed when the three minutes have passed. When you are called, please identify yourself with the record and if you are formally speaking as a representative or member of a group, the calendar number or application you are speaking about and whether you are for or against the item. When, excuse me, then you may begin your testimony. At the discretion of the chair, if there are a large number of speakers on any particular item, it may be put on second call. Speakers for and against that item will be called to testify in an alternating basis. Please note that if you are testifying virtually, you must keep your camera on during your testimony and display your name accurately on Zoom. If at any point you have any technical issues, please let our planning staff know in the chat and we will assist you. Thank you for your cooperation.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you, Lisa. You've just been advised on the proceedings of this hearing and how it will be conducted. Of course, I reserve the right to ask speakers for clarifications or further information regarding your applications or your comments. Lisa, please call the first calendar item.
Calendar items number one, two, and three are related items. The applicant, excuse me, ULP numbers 2, 4, 0, 3, 2, 8. ULP 2, 4, 0, 3, 3, 0, H, A, Q, and ULP 2, 4, 0, 3, 3, 0, H, A, Q. Applicant, please prepare your testimony.
Good morning, Borough President Richards' office and all present. My name is Annabelle Manier. I'm a senior planner with HPD's Queens and Staten Island Planning Unit in the Office of Neighborhood Strategies. And we want to thank you for this opportunity to present. First of all, I want to make sure that you are seeing my presentation. If not. Apologies.
No problem.
Okay. Now can confirming we can see it?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. So we want to thank you for this opportunity to present this project, the South Jamaica Gateway Rezoning, to your office and to the constituents of Queens. And we are happy to announce that the City Planning Commission has certified this application into public review as of May 28th. And Queens Community Board 12, which includes the neighborhood of South Jamaica, where the project is located. Community Board 12 voted favorably for this application at their full board meeting on Wednesday, June 12th. So today we'll briefly review the project, starting with the applicant team and the nonprofit partners. And we'll continue with a refresher on the project basics, including the area, the actions before the City Planning Commission and the sites. And the development team, Jack Heaney, will cover the proposed developments and then will open it up for questions. So the development team for this proposal is a joint venture between the Briarwood Organization, Moses Soul Realty, and Fulcrum Properties. These companies have extensive experience developing affordable housing across New York City. And the nonprofit partners are two longstanding community strongholds. The Guardian Fellowship and the Thomas White Jr. Foundation. And I'll ask the development team and partners to introduce themselves at this time. And we'll start with Jack Heaney.
Hi, good morning, everyone. Thank you, President Richards, for hosting us this morning. I'm Jack Heaney. I'm the founder and managing principal of Fulcrum Properties, one of the co-developers for this project.
Great. Bernard, can you go next, please, and introduce the nonprofit partners?
Let me first get off mute. Good morning, everybody. Glad to be here with you. I'm Bernard Warren. I'm Moses Soul Realty, one of the development partners and a longtime resident of Queens and a person who grew up in South Jamaica. So I'm very excited to present this project with the group today. We have Guardian Fellowship with us. Pastor Kendra, if you can just say hello to the group. And we also have Thomas White Foundation represented by Brian White.
Good morning to each and every one of you. Thank you for this opportunity. I am Pastor Kendra Renee Manigold of the Greater Fellowship Church and the Guardian Fellowship Project.
Thank you, Pastor Kendra. Brian, you're probably on mute.
Yes, this is.
There you go.
Can you see me?
Yes, we can see you, Brian.
Okay. This is Brian White, the executive director of the Thomas White Jr. Foundation. We've been a staple in the community for over 44 years and we're very excited about this project that we're about to ensue.
Thank you, Brian. I think Ira is on the phone. So Ira, can you hear us?
Great.
Okay, if he's, I know he's on the phone. So if you can't hear us, I guess, Annabelle, we could just pivot back to you.
So, right, so Briarwood is joining, but Ira's not in a location right now where he can speak, but he is listening in.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, so we'll move right along. So just a little bit of background first. The majority of the proposed project area, which is shown here, was zoned in its current designation of R5D with a C14 commercial overlay as part of the city-sponsored Jamaica Plan rezoning, which was approved in September 2007. The Jamaica Plan was a comprehensive planning and rezoning strategy for a 368-block area that was designed to encourage the economic revitalization of downtown Jamaica and the provision of affordable housing while preserving the adjoining residential homeowner neighborhoods. Prior to 2007, the rezoning area was rezoned R4 with a C12 overlay. Oh, I'm sorry, was zoned R4 with a C12 overlay, which was the original zoning designation established in 1961 when the zoning resolution of the City of New York was first enacted. The two HPD-owned lots in the proposed project area were later included as part of, these are highlighted in red, I should point out, just so everyone can see. They were later included as part of the Revitalizing Neighborhoods New Infill Homeownership Opportunities Program and the Neighborhood Construction Program Request for Qualifications. This development team was awarded the cluster that included South Jamaica and later brought on their nonprofit partners and worked with HPD and the city to create a separate proposal and project plan that would facilitate the production of more affordable housing, helping meet a stated need in the area. The proposed actions before you, as you can see on this slide, are as part of ULP and as certified by the City Planning Commission are, one, a zoning map amendment from R4, R5B, R5D, and R5D with a C14 overlay to R7A with a C14 overlay for portions of block fronts on blocks 10129 and 10161. See the map comparison shown. The rezoning boundary is highlighted in yellow for visibility. A zoning text amendment to the New York City Zoning Resolution Appendix F, inclusionary housing designated areas and mandatory inclusionary housing areas to establish the rezoning area as mandatory inclusionary housing or MIH area. And then urban, number three, an urban development action area designation, an approval of an urban development action area project for proposed development A, including the disposition of city-owned, the city-owned portion of development site A, block 10161, lots 3 and 9, to the developer. So there are two development sites for this proposal. Again, development site A is located at 101-106-01-GUY-R-BREWER-BULLIVARD on the eastern side of the street and comprises Queens Block 10161, lots 1, 3, and 9. Lot 1 is privately owned and lots 3 and 9 are city-owned under HPD's jurisdiction. And lot 9 is just outside, but not within the proposed rezoning area. Site A is the site that would be subject to the UDAP action. Development Site B is located at 162-02-TUSKAGI-AIRMIN-WAY on the southern side of the street at the intersection of Union Hall Street and consists of three privately owned lots, Queens Block 10129, lots 1, 3, and 4. And now I will pass it off to Jack Heaney from the development team, who will discuss the proposed developments in more detail.
Thanks, Annabelle. So zooming in on the individual development sites, Site A is intended to be the all-senior building. This will follow air zoning regulations and the program consists of Guardian's new home in the ground floor and cellar spaces, as well as new recreation spaces for the senior residents. Moving up through the building, we'll be including additional recreation spaces for the senior residents, including two accessible terraces. The total height is nine stories, again, following the air zoning envelope, with a total of 40, approximately 42,000 zoning square feet, 78 units total, which will be primarily studios and one bedrooms for senior residents. And there'll be on the ground floor, new community facility space for Guardian Fellowship, which will be their new home. In addition, there will be 11 parking spaces also at grade, the entrance to which is off Tuskegee Airman Way. Zooming in on Site B. Site B will be the new home for the Thomas White Foundation. It actually follows a similar zoning envelope, but here we're utilizing mandatory inclusionary housing rules or MIH. So this will be a mixed multifamily building, so not senior-focused like Site A. Program, though, is similar and the ground floor will be the new home for the Thomas White Foundation as well as the cellar. Moving up through the building, we'll have additional recreation and terrace spaces for the residents at different floor levels, including the roof. Similar to Site A, it will be nine stories, approximately 43,000 square feet of zoning use. A slightly smaller number of units is 65, which again will be multifamily, so it'll be a mix of studio, ones and two bedrooms. The ground floor will be approximately 4,400 square feet for Thomas White Foundation's new home. And there'll be 16 surface parking spaces accessible off Union Hall Street. I'll say for both sites that we intend the project to be 100% electric. They'll be designed to kind of push sustainability envelope to exceed the current city's energy code requirements. So, and with that, I'll hand it back to Annabelle to go through the remainder of the ULP timeline.
Great, thank you, Jack. So just to remind everyone where we are in terms of ULP. Again, the City Planning Commission just certified the project on May 28th. Community Board 12 has completed their review. Once the Borough President's recommendations are in and submitted to City Planning's Queens office, it will be scheduled for a public hearing with the City Planning Commission and then can be scheduled for a vote. And after that, it will move on to the City Council for a vote and then for mayoral approval. And then that will be the conclusion of ULP. Post approvals, the project will go through the closing process for each site and the team would acquire the necessary building permits for construction before construction would be able to begin. And that concludes our presentation. So we'll open it up now to questions. Thank you.
Thank you. So I want to start with the hardest question. Go through, how many units in each building?
There will be 78 affordable units in the senior building, on Site A. 65 in the Thomas White Foundation building.
Not a popular question to ask in Queens, but why didn't you do more units?
I'll ask Jack for assistance answering that question.
So, first of all, as a developer, President Richards, we love that question. In this case, for both sites, this is essentially the maximum unit count that we could fit within the agreed upon or allowed zoning envelope when we rezoned to R7A. So we found every available square footage and every available square footage deduction that we could. And this was basically the maximum envelope that we could arrive to in terms of the number of units, so.
Can you go through, so I keep hearing the word affordability, can you just go through what does the affordability?
So, the Site A will be 100% senior and it will be financed through HPD's SARAH program. The SARAH program is intended to finance senior buildings where the rents are, well, first off, it'll be 100% project-based vouchers is typically how these projects are financed. But in terms of the income level for the senior residents is typically 30% to 40% of AMI. For Site B, this is more of a mixed income project, so it will be still 100% affordable and financed through HPD's new construction program, I think it's called, so NCP for short. And that's intended to be for like infill sites where you're doing mixed income multifamily. So in this case, we'll have a percentage that are formerly homeless, up to 77% of AMI.
Okay, no, I did the first SARAH program, I like to say that, in Queens, well, in the city, actually, under de Blasio. So I'm always proud of that project. So great to see SARAH is included in this on the senior piece. And then, but you're starting breakdown sort of what the unit count on the HPD's new program looks like on the 77 units. So if you could just break that down a little bit more.
No problem. So the second site, Site B, so the actual breakdown is, you have 15% formerly homeless. We'll have 45% at 50% of AMI and 40% at 77% of AMI.
And no, oh, and no 30% AMI in?
I'm sorry?
No 30% AMI units in?
Uh, not currently is underwritten, no. But this is also subject to, you know, change in revision prior to the final closing of the project, so.
I just recommend to HPD and you finding a pathway to get some 30% AMI units in, especially for the surrounding community, you know, it'd be great if, perhaps if there were some residents in South Jamaica houses who would like, you know, an opportunity for upper mobility to certainly have an opportunity here, since South Jamaica houses isn't too far from here. So if we can look at that, that would be great. Squeezing in some 30% would be helpful to us here. To construction, so what are you doing on, how many jobs are projected on this project? And are you building, are you using any labor unions on this project as well?
So I don't think we, I know we haven't done an analysis on the number of jobs projected yet. In terms of the hiring goals, we'll be following NYC hire. Typically, for our projects, we target a 30 to 40% NWBE hiring threshold, which we meet in all of our projects and we tend to meet and exceed here. We are not currently considering any union trades. This is typically done as a non, actually, let me take one step back. So Site A is a, will be financed with project-based vouchers. So that actually triggers prevailing wage or Davis Bacon. So that site would likely involve typical union trades. For Site B, we do not have that same funding requirement. So that would still be TBD in terms of any dedicated union trades. So, but within that mix, we usually have some trades like elevator installers and things like that that are union because they're highly specialized.
Got it. And I just wanted to get you on the record. I know SARAH triggers that. You know, I would always recommend at least minimum 30% local hire and working with a CBO partner. So perhaps since the Thomas White Foundation is on this project, certainly working with them and some of their clientele and also outreach to South Jamaica houses in particular to ensure that there is an opportunity for locals to be on this specific job. So we asked for this in writing and we also would like to see requirements on that. Perhaps I can, you know, go to Thomas White or, and then CB12 and myself just on what the local hiring goals and MWBE thresholds are. So we'll just ask for 30% minimum, but I love feeling 40%, being that the state is doing better in the city, but definitely on the MWBE piece and also the local hiring piece, having that local reporting requirement. Are you in alignment with that?
Yes, we are. And that, the plan was to work with Thomas White Foundation, is taking the lead on the local hiring efforts, as well as the interacting with the community board.
Right. And, but once again, the reporting mechanisms go to Thomas White or perhaps they'll draft the report, but then to Speaker Adams or, I don't know if this is, I think this is Speaker Adams, that's right, or Councilmember Williams, one of the two, and then myself and CB12 so that we can keep track on those hiring goals. But once again, direct outreach to South Jamaica houses as well would be something we look for here. Um, so the church will remain correct?
I'm sorry, the audio broke up. President Richards, could you repeat that?
We asked, will it remain correct?
I'm sorry, I'm still having issues. I don't know if anyone else from the team can respond?
Yeah, I couldn't hear the question clearly.
Yeah. You may want to change out this mic.
One second.
Oh.
Hello, hello?
It's a little better.
I'll try to do another mic. You hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, that's good.
That was too close to the mic. Sorry about that. So just go through community facility again. So the church will remain at the site, correct?
That's correct.
And then Thomas White Foundation as well, correct?
Correct.
And what are the, so are they, they're being charged rents?
No, actually, so as part of their consideration for contributing their properties to the project, they'd be receiving a commercial condominium.
Love it.
Yep.
All right. If you could just go through, once again, your green energy. Are you considering renewable energy piece? So I love hearing 100% electric. What are you doing on your rooftop?
Yep. So for the areas of the rooftop that aren't being used as accessible terraces, we would have a solar panel system or solar panel array. In terms of the certification goals, so these are HPD financed, so at a minimum, we have to meet and exceed enterprise green communities. And then beyond that, we're looking at perhaps pursuing a new certification, I think it's called Net Zero Homes. It's basically sort of Energy Star Plus and it's intended for 100% electric buildings. And then we also, within that envelope, will use, you know, new heat pump technology where accessible to keep the operating cost for both the owners and the tenants to a minimum.
Great. And then within the buildings, will you have also dedicated space for the tenants?
Yep. Yep. So on Site A, we actually have a large ground floor recreation and meeting space. That's all, that's a C and A way. And then we have sprinkled throughout the building, smaller recreation spaces for yoga, meeting rooms, exercise classes, things like that. And then on the rooftop, we have, I think, at least two terraces and then the main rooftop would also be accessible. For Site B, we have, because the ground floor is primarily, is dedicated to Thomas White's new space, the recreation spaces are above, so we have a community room, I think at one of the setback floors. And then we have also at least two accessible terraces for recreation use, so.
Children rooms?
Uh, not dedicated per se to children. We would have interior recreation rooms for the tenants. So that also would connect to the outdoor terrace. So the idea is to have sort of indoor/outdoor space that you could program as needed.
Okay, great. And then non-smoking?
Yes.
Both buildings?
Yes.
Great. Smoke-free.
Yep.
Alrighty, I guess my last question would be, so HPD, we're talking about this as being the gateway. So tell me about tree plantings, maintenance, being that this is the gateway into South Jamaica.
Good morning, President Richards. This is Kevin Paris. I'm the director for the Queens and Staten Island Planning Team at HPD. Just want to make sure I get some clarity on the question. I think you're talking about outside of this project and just exactly what else is coming to this project area around? Yeah, so this project will adhere to the standard tree plantings that need to happen as part of this project. And you know, the city is also taking a look at South Jamaica holistically and a lot of these and a lot of the intended plans for improvements to the area are going to happen in those conversations as well. This, for the bounds for this project is really going to stay within the bounds of this, of the site plan. And you know, the redevelopment of sort of the sidewalks as part of the development of this project is going to happen. Outside of the bounds of this project, though, that will come as part of a larger city initiative towards, you know, providing better amenities and better site planning of the overall neighborhood as part of those conversations.
And lighting, lighting, I noticed these blocks are extremely well, so will there be lighting included within the scope of this, of these sites?
Within the scope of this project, I do not believe that the improvement of the street lighting is going to be part of the scope of these projects themselves. I think those will become part of, the part of like larger scope items outside of the bounds of this project.
So I'm going to recommend that DOT start to look at this now, being that, and one of the things Being that, and one of the things I love about developing this area, that there, as we all know, has been a lot of activity on Tuskegee Airways place in these back blocks. So definitely developing this, this site plan is great, but I would not wait to start from a security perspective to put lighting in. So I would suggest DOT start to look at that now. And then I guess that leads me to the other question. Will there be security? Not to say that there's, you know, it's gotten a lot better, but we do know that there's activity in this area, so. And hopefully with the redevelopment of both of these sites, we'll see less of that. But if the development team could speak to, will there be cameras, security, key card system? What does that look like for the residents here?
Yep. So we typically incorporate a closed circuit camera system into each property. We'd also, we also typically use a fob system for entry for the residents. And then, President, since your point about lighting, the renderings are still schematic and taken during daytime, but typically we would incorporate exterior lighting design into our buildings as well to help, you know, further promote sense of security at night.
And key card system to get in, how do you get in the building?
A fob system.
Okay. Right. So I say that only because we've had challenges in South Jamaica houses in particular with loitering in common areas, not even loitering, but people literally sleeping in some of the buildings. So we know we got to build housing. This helps with that to address certainly our housing crisis. But there are challenges being that we're so close to the E train here. So I just want to make sure I point that out very early on for the safety of the residents who will also be here. We continue to work with NYPD on that issue, but we don't want to see people sleeping in the common areas and residents feeling threatened here as well. So this is a catchment area that we do have these challenges in. So I just wanted to just ensure that I raised that. With that, with that being said, I'll go to any members of my team have questions, comments, concerns?
No, you covered everything. Thank you.
Well, see, this is a great, I am beyond excited about, great to see it finally coming into fruition. I remember, I think I was talking about this project many years ago. And South Jamaica deserves nothing less than any other community. So very happy to see this project come to fruition. We'll ask for those things once again that are requested in writing. And then we look forward to certainly approving this project. So congratulations on a great project, one of many to come.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate your support.
Yeah, this development looks like. This is what, this is an example, so.
Yeah, we're excited to have you to the groundbreaking soon.
All right, I look forward.
We thank you both. We thank you both, President, and we look forward to doing more work in the borough. And don't get tired of seeing us, us being HPD.
Never tired of seeing you. Alrighty, thank you all.
Thank you.
See you at our next land use hearing, which will be, oh, I don't think I have the correct date on this, but look forward to seeing y'all at the next one next month. Oh, city of yes, that's the next one in August. So we look forward to seeing you all. This hearing is now officially, well, let me ask this. Are any member of the public who wish to testify? All right, no speakers? Great. Alrighty, with that being said, this hearing is officially closed. Thank you all.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Bye, bye.
Thank you.